Okay, good morning, Council. Nice to see everyone. It is officially 11:01, so I'm going to call our special called meeting and city workshop on the fiscal year 2026 bond program to order, and I will turn it over to City Manager Jay Choppa.
Good morning, and welcome to your new work session room. This is pretty awesome. Nobody's at our back, for those of us that used to sit with the crowd at our back, and we can see everybody out there. This morning, we wanted to have a, it's a short, hour-long workshop, really to just provide some background to the City Council on the bond program list and how the priorities and recommendations and really to talk about next steps. You know, we're over a year away from the actual election. We're probably seven to eight months away from the City Council making a decision on actually putting the bond on the election cycle and finalizing the projects that will go there. And really, we're working off of our previous assumptions related to the size of the bond. There's a lot of things going on in Austin. There's a lot of things going on locally with the appraisal district and just the market overall that could ultimately change what, you know, how much money we'll be able to actually put on the bond and the overall values. So we're going forward with the $800 million valuation, current estimate. That could be a number much smaller or a number larger by the time we get to August. And so with that in mind, I just want to put out there that this is a flexible situation. It's a plan, and as we get feedback from the constituents, these projects may change. We may, the recommendations may change. And so asking the City Council to be open-minded as we move forward. With that, I'll ask Kristi Ann to come forward and lead the presentation.
Good morning. Trying to figure out where to stand now. How's this?
We can see you, though, which is helpful.
But I told them, I'm like, I'm going to have to start doing the back of my hair now.
What's that?
Don't bother styling the back of my hair now, I'm going to have to.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, happy April, happy new work session room, very exciting. So like Jay mentioned, we scheduled this to have just sort of dedicated time, sort of like we do with the budget workshops, and the agenda is open enough to explore, you know, a variety of topics at your interest. So the deck I have today is not our same deck from March 4th. I do have those slides for reference if we want to dig in anywhere. But I'm hoping to share some of what we've heard since March 4th. So a number of us have been sitting in meetings with you and with the public, neighborhood groups and such. I have some additional data sets that we pulled just out of curiosity, want to talk briefly about digital engagement, and then, you know, we can facilitate other discussions as needed. So with that, Jay did a good job level-setting sort of about the stage we're in really early. This is a staff-recommended proposal, and at this point, we're sort of changing from methodology and scoring to how we engage with and incorporate your feedback, feedback from the public. So we welcome, appreciate, need the engagement. We've heard lots of things over the last few weeks. I've sat in meetings where people are really excited and people who are concerned. All of that is okay and very appropriate for where we are. So with that, remember, departments submitted two, almost two and a half billion dollars in requests. So these are submissions by department, not by proposition, and the needs far outweigh the bond capacity that we are planning for. So Jay mentioned it's a planning number, 800 million, as of now, based on our projected growth in appraised values. And so you'll see that figure changes as we get certified values in July. We're really watching, based on the reappraisal plan that Tad's adopted and other things going on at the legislative level. And so we have a number of scenarios built that we feel like are conservative, but we just need to monitor carefully. So no changes since March 4th. I know, you know, we've been taking meetings and departments have begun to think about trade-offs in projects that they're, you know, hearing about, but for now, this is the same recommended proposal you saw a couple of weeks ago. So here's a list of the proposed propositions and that, the amount per proposition. Funding here is just rounded to the nearest, you know, 100,000. So first two props, streets and mobility and parks and open space. Jay mentioned this, and it's true, you know, we're sort of working off the same assumptions as previous bonds, so you'll see those are pretty close to having their same proportion of the total bond program. And you'll see library, public safety and animal care, particularly animal care in Proposition E is where some of the capacity gets shuffled around, so you see that kind of moving from a historical 2% to a 7.5% for that new facility. So we've had some questions since my presentation on March 4th about the process, who was involved, the criteria used, so I'm going to run through that quickly. It's been the typical practice to convene an internal working group with primary stakeholders, so we did that again. You can see the steering committee here. Departments have their expertise and their ways of prioritizing projects, so, you know, some keep, I mentioned, like a running list when they hear things. They use lots of quantitative data that often mirrors what the lab uses. They also have all their qualitative data and expertise in their different fields and industries. So the steering committee reviewed projects from that lens, and then the lab also provided a number of data sets to sort of layer in with those department scores in hopes of creating a really robust data-rich scoring methodology. So it sort of incorporates, you know, citywide objective analysis with department expertise. So we designed with the steering committee a number of options and then gathered feedback from them using the thought exchange tool. People could submit their ideas and feedback sort of anonymously without fear of repercussion, just getting judgment. And so we develop, the committee, this committee, developed the scoring criteria and prioritized those criteria, and then there were a bunch of scoring scenarios we worked through and tested.
Question, Kristi Ann, who was commenting on the thought exchange tool?
The steering committee. So we would create the scoring committee, or the scoring criteria, and then we used it so that people could like sort of live input and rank criteria, like, hey, public safety should be top, no, bump it down, you know, those kinds of things.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, now, we will use thought exchange with the public, and I'll show that just in a little bit. It's a pretty cool tool for input. Okay, and then you saw this slide on March 4th, but this, you know, process I just described sort of led to the scoring methodology that used department prioritization and then lab data sets to create this sort of merged score. So in most cases, I don't remember how much I mentioned this before, but in most cases, the department ranks and then the way that the lab sort of looked at things and scored them were very well-aligned. Sometimes they were the same, sometimes they were like one or two scores apart in a long, long list, which is great. In the few instances that wasn't the case, we didn't sort of leave it that way. We dug in and investigated with the department. Sometimes they'd edit, sometimes we'd edit based on those investigations and exploration. I think the good thing about being so aligned between two different methodologies is that it gives extra credibility to both approaches. Like, I don't know if you've done math with like a kid lately, but my seventh grader, like he has math, he has math problems like in some kind of new-fangled way that his teachers have taught him. And so when we do math together, I use my way and he uses his way, and then when we come to the same answer, we're like, okay, great. And so that's sort of what this reminds me of. We had sort of aligned approaches that people agreed on, but, you know, sort of scored things differently. So the lab's data doesn't replace any of the department's scores, but it kind of serves as that check and balance on all the different ways departments look at things. And then my last slide, kind of on criteria here, this is just a reminder of the lab's side of things, because I kind of help speak for them. The tabular analysis, which just means half of our criteria was based on project submission forms on the left, so that measured things like, is this project in collaboration with another agency? Is this a legal requirement? Is it leveraging financial opportunities? A number of other things. And then on the right-hand side, we use GIS to do the other piece of the analysis. This measured things like, you know, how well-aligned is this project with approved or adopted master plans? Is this either maybe an economic development targeted area or maybe, on the other hand, a neighborhood empowerment zone? So those are some of the criteria used on the geospatial side. Okay. I think I've hit on that criterion methodology stuff enough. Any questions about any of that before I kind of move into the next section? So here's the map again of project locations for the 2026 bond staff recommendations. Citywide, this is the same project list, but a new map, because we did here after the March 4th presentation that we weren't showing the city limits in their entirety. We did that on purpose to kind of try to give extra zoom, but we didn't want to leave out any of the outskirts, so this is, you know, showing sort of the whole city limits. And then here's funding by district again. We haven't made any official changes since March 4th. One thing that we were curious about, and we talked about a little bit with city management, was we really hadn't run prior to March 4th old district boundaries, like prior to redistricting, and this is the first bond since that happened. So just like for, you know, data reasons, we threw the 2026 bond projects onto the former district map to see how things aligned. I'm not sure if the map is as helpful as the sort of chart that shows former districts. The point here is not really, not that we just always want to be comparing district by district, right? But just to show more of history, since we're in that awkward stage where this is the first bond program since the district lines were redrawn, because it's hard when we show like historical, like we've done in previous slides, when it's not exactly apples-to-apples history. Outside of that sort of historical analysis, another thing we wanted to see was what other capital funding exists and, you know, kind of where is it, who is getting it? So you're obviously aware that we have, excuse me, many capital sources. Those include things like grants, you know, obviously in the last few years, we've had ARPA, Pago, which we talk about every year as part of the budget process, CCPD, sometimes space for police land and facilities, impact fees, that kind of thing. So we kind of projected into the future and said, if we did in fact do 800 million in the 2026 bond, here's sort of what the breakdown would be from 2018 to 2026 of non-bond funding sources versus bond funding sources, if that makes sense. So this would show that six out of every 10. Hold on.
Just to add a little color to this, I asked, actually asked staff to look at, since we're comparing back to 2018 and 2022, I said, especially with COVID coming through and the additional federal dollars, all the impact fees that we've collected, you know, we don't do these bond packages as far as staff goes on making the decisions just based on the bond packages themselves in a vacuum. It's based on citywide look, what has gone forward, what, you know, what other projects have moved forward in that timeframe. So I asked a question, what does it look like since 2018 when you take in all our capital that has gone forward and where has that been located and where, how does that play? How does this new bond program play into that larger picture? And so I think they did a good job outlining, so you'll see, especially because of the federal funds that we received during COVID, that other dollars significantly outweigh over the last six years what has come forward in bond programs, and even if you add a new bond program next year. And so just from a broader perspective, I wanted to have that look so that you all are aware of that information, so go ahead.
Thank you. Just a quick caveat on this slide that I don't think I said. This shows capital spend from the departments who are in the bond, so it leaves out, for instance, water, aviation. So if you look at the numbers, you're like, that looks kind of low for our whole capital program. That would, that's the reason. Questions here? So then, we attempted a data set, which will continue, I think, to update for data, you know, cleaning and tracking. This shows more detail, so the breakdown of non-bond funding and bond funding per district. So again, here with the whole history thing, we've tried to manually manipulate projects that originated earlier than 2023 to ensure they're captured right. So you'll see in blue the bottom section of each bar, which areas have sort of tended to get more non-bond capital over the past few years. And then in orange and green, you can see past bonds, and then green, you know, proposed bonds. So this sort of shows for, just for transportation in particular, and then I have the same chart for parks in particular. We just did those two sort of propositions or topics, and so those are the big two. So in some cases, I think, this is just data, right, reflecting the real activities that are underway across the city. Doesn't mean it's right or wrong. It's, for me, it's nice to see a comprehensive view. I think in some cases, it helps advance the conversation or at least give you a different lens. But you know, as well as I do, the, you know, sort of the concept of need and how we assess need is just a complicated calculus. So do we aim for the same number of projects in each district or dollars in each district? Like, no, not necessarily. It's a more, much more nuanced conversation than that. So now, at this point, we're sharing data with you, the public, to sort of see where we maybe are getting it right and where we may have, you know, missed something. So that's sort of the point of layering in these additional data sets.
And I think, Kristi Ann, before we move into maybe more specifics on the program, I'll pause here. If you go back to the previous slide, transportation funding's fine. We'll use that as a, as a example. I'm specifically paying attention to District 4 and District 10, both in what is currently articulated or proposed for the 2026 bond, along with layering other funding, the story does not tell well. And we have an immense amount of growth in D4 and D10, and you also have to remember, this bond goes to voters. You have a large percentage of voters in those districts. And so I really appreciate both of these slides, because I think it does tell a bigger picture. But as we continue to talk today, and these are just two examples, there are other districts I think we need to dig into, and each council member's going to have their perspective here, but I'm a little concerned at what I see, specifically for North Fort Worth. And it's interesting, I think we've learned a lot of lessons. If you look at D7, there's an immense amount of concentration of, especially on the transportation funding side. Same thing with D3, because we learned a lot of what we did not do in North Fort Worth for 20 years. So maybe we're trying to prevent that from happening, but if I were a constituent that lived in D4 or D10, I would probably not like what I see. So we just need to be focused on that. This, this bond has to look good for the entire city of Fort Worth. Thank you.
Yes, understood. Thank you. Right.
Yeah, and I think, you know, if you go through here, D6 is the same thing. Elizabeth, I heard you say that. I mean, there's, there's some other, D5, there's some other districts here that, but I do think the data you presented is very helpful, because we do need to look holistically at capital programs.
Sure.
As well as what we're doing in the bond election. So just calling that out. And I'm using D4 specifically, because there's such a low percentage of bond projects, and arguably also was in the last bond, too, because it was really D10 or D4 before. So anyway, we can talk more about it.
Yeah, that's good. Yeah, that's our goal, right? Just to provide the lens of, you know, the holistic picture, so that we can see where we're missing. Okay, thank you. So next topic, so you may, you may remember my exchange with Councilmember Nettles on March 4th, when he was pleasantly surprised about hemp hill and Risinger. He's like, when did that get in there? And so you might also remember that the reason that that sort of popped into the proposal right before you got it was because just before the presentation, we'd received notice of some federal money for another project, I think it was Meacham. And so we'd reallocated to another TPW priority for arterials. The question on the table, and this is really just for sort of hypothetical discussion, and maybe, you know, Jay, you can weigh in, too. You know, if we hadn't reallocated the 25 million, you sort of just before we came to you in that presentation, where, where else might it have settled, right? So not that we're proposing to move it, but those are the conversations we have all the time, right? So I'll remind you of this list about supplemental projects we were planning to take to the community that either were sort of next in line in each category, or they're projects that have significant public interest, or at least really, you know, pockets of public interest where you're hearing about them a lot. And so that's, that's this list, which you've seen before, so like these could be options for, you know, other things to do with, with that 25 million.
Kristi Ann, so if 800 million is our, is our goal, what's our capacity?
800 million is the projected capacity. We're going above and beyond capacity for the purpose of engagement, so that people have more of a menu to select from, so it doesn't feel so fully baked.
Okay.
But 800 million right now is the, the projected capacity that will continue to revisit as values, you know, settle.
Okay. So we're programmed, the, the list that you gave us was the, was fully programmed.
800 million, right. Yeah, so this 125 would make it 925, you know, but we don't, you know, we don't maybe expect to go to 925, but it allows for some of the trade-off conversations.
I think part of this, it was my idea to do this. In the past, we, we'd never done this, and what would often happen is that projects would materialize that were never a priority anywhere in the community by, you know, a group of five stakeholders. And we had other projects, and then they would say, well, we didn't, our project didn't get moved into it, you didn't hear us. It was listened to, but I think when it came back to the City Council, it was never something that constituents had talked to the council about, it was never on the council's list. And so what we thought is instead of, you know, staff made this recommendation, and it's truly a planning recommendation, we want to get the feedback from the constituents and our citizens, we want to get feedback from the City Council, but we thought it would help if we had the next set of projects that are priorities, that have been priorities, and not just something that materialized in the last month or two, right? That have been on the list for City Council members, for constituent stakeholders, or staff, of, of things that would make a big difference in the city and the community moving forward. And so the question is, or that, when we go out there, is that if you see a project that you think should be funded versus another project, what, what would those, what do you want to tell us those are, and what would you take off the list, right? There's not just extra dollars. So it's kind of a, it's gathering information and setting prioritization at the end of the day. That's, and part about Kristi Ann putting the 25 million, that was truly an 11th hour, what's next on the list, so we could hit the 800 million for this presentation. We literally found out the Friday before that the Meacham grant came, came forward at 25 million, and the East Berry project and the Risinger project, or the Hemp Hill project, were partly funded, not fully funded, and so TPW said those would be, those dollars to those projects would be our next one on the list. But it didn't go through the lab process, the whole process, everything else. And so we just wanted to give an example, this 25 million just was a final amount that was there. And really, today, if, if the council's inclined to give us feedback on, on individually or as, as council members, you would, you would like to see, if that, if that money was reprogrammed, where, where should we put it? Whether a certain proposition, a different proposition than arterials, or transportation, should it go to a different area? Should it go to a district-specific or a project-specific? It's kind of what we're looking for, feedback from you.
Before I open it up to council members for interaction, the supplemental projects for community engagement is more specific here, specific projects. I don't see another list of 800 million dollars and those propositions of what those would break, the breakdown would look like. Do you have that? Does that make sense? In other words, I think it's hard to ask council members for reaction on the supplemental projects if they don't actually have the 800 million proposed bond, individual projects to react to.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't know if that's available.
Do we not provide that as part of the package?
It is from the March 4th package. It's also probably, I think it's part of this deck, if I escape and unhide things, so we can open it up.
Okay, I think we don't need to do that, and maybe someone could print it.
Yes.
Glorious, okay. So council, I'll open it up for kind of reaction. Before I do that, though, Kristi Ann, the next page has options, options for reprogramming money?
Yes.
What does that mean?
Yes, so the 25 million, same conversation. We wanted to remind you of the supplemental list, which is sort of across all the propositions. If there was a desire to keep money in that 25 million, which was an arterials project, in arterials or in other streets and mobility categories, these are the likely menu of options as far as like sort of what scored next down the list. So again, just sort of a hypothetical, here are some other options if you maybe had the chance to reprogram 25.
Yeah, this is the list from staff.
That's right. Yeah.
Okay, council.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Kristi Ann. I had the chance to meet with TPW ahead of this presentation, and I was pleased to see Risinger Road as a recommendation for a number of reasons. The stretch of Risinger Road is between Crowley Road and Technology Boulevard, which is right by 35. And there's a number of variables that I think makes this project's timing really important. It's the last stretch of Risinger Road from Chisholm Trail all the way over to 35. That's still an old county barn ditch road, and it's right along the new Crowley ISD multipurpose complex. They're getting ready to construct indoor and an outdoor track facility that's going to be competition UIL level, including also professional track competitions. And there's been significant private investment on making improvements along this stretch of road from Majestic, Dr. Horton, O&amp;M Living, and so we've been able to make significant improvements through private investment. And all of the stakeholders, Crowley ISD and those folks I mentioned, and the new residents that now live along that road, have mentioned just how dangerous it is getting in and out of that stretch of Risinger Road. To add more complications to an already dangerous and important situation, I-35 will be going under construction, and that's in the next few years, which will ultimately mean that this road is the only detour route. And so timing is of the essence, and this has certainly been the only arterial priority that I've had for District 6. And I know Councilmember Nettles has been on several joint calls with, with stakeholders in the area, and so I certainly wouldn't want to see Risinger get nixed. And I, I'll say it on public record, just as I've told staff, you know, I'm willing to, you know, make trade-offs there. And I know Councilmember Nettles has been a huge partner in helping us get the level of private investment that we've gotten, but short of a bond, we just won't get this done, and it'll be another eight years before we do it, and that's probably going to be too late.
Thank you, Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Blaylock.
Thank you, Mayor. So when we look at the supplemental list, I just note that there are projects, infrastructure projects, roads specifically, in Districts 3, 8, 10, and 11, that have funding partners where, where we've negotiated with another entity to help pay for these projects with the understanding we were going to pay our part, too. And if these are not in the bond, I wonder how we honor our commitment and our discussion with those other entities. And then on the secondary list, there are a few road projects in District 10 that become critical as relief valves. Wagley-Robinson is one, as the text dot work building a bridge goes forward. If that is not done, then the bridge at Avondale-Hasslet and Wagley, you know, can't go forward. And, and so I really don't want to see us cripple our future and cripple the investments that other entities have committed by, by not considering them, and, and most of this stuff is not up here for discussion. So if there's other mechanisms for providing that, I would be interested in knowing it.
Councilmember Beck.
What I, I think I'm most concerned with is the breakdown of the proposed funding, particularly when you look at the average funding ratios compared to previous bonds. I know it's, we're all out talking to folks right now, and the one thing that I hear over and over again, and polling tells us, is that streets are what are the most important thing to our residents right now. It's streets, streets, and more streets. And so I would like to see more, and I think the projects, as we went around this table, people chose to highlight streets as what was the most necessary thing to them. So I really think we need to go back and look at reprioritizing all of this funding and shouldn't slip. I mean, we're, we went from 65, 66% to right at 60% as a proportion of the bond, and I don't want to see us lose an inch on that, because people want their roads.
Thank you. Councilmember Nettles, did you have something? No? Okay, perfect. Council, any other reactions on that? No. Okay. Well, Michael had it. So someone in the city has the list from, so in the future. I love y'all, but we get so many presentations that it's really hard to keep up with, so if someone would get it to us, that'd be, yes. Yeah, I don't have that drop, they erased the Dropbox, so. It's, well, it's not, it's not actually. That's, that's an old pre-council presentation, so wherever that is, that's super helpful.
Okay, I think they're printing them, too.
Thank you. To keep the conversation going, though, I am curious for my council members, if you go, Kristi Ann, to page, where are we here? Not a page number. Supplemental projects for community engagement. When my council, I'm putting you all on the spot, when you look at this list, I'm just curious, district by district, do these make sense to you? Do they surprise you? Is there something glaringly missing that you, in working your districts, feel like should have been on this list, or importantly, could be on this enumerated list that's currently proposed in the bond? Anybody can kind of weigh in there, or you feel like it's a pretty close?
Yeah, please, Macy.
I think the thing that jumps out to me the most is housing. How did we assign $10 million to housing when we're trying to prioritize streets and mobility?
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
So to speak to the housing, I think those of us that wanted to see a prioritization of housing in the bond, $10 million was the dollar amount that was thrown out when that initial discussion was had with city staff and council. The one thing that I don't see that is incredibly important to District 9 is at least design work and connectivity between the West 7th and Panther Island connections, and we're building so much in that corridor, but we haven't built or widened any of those arterials or access in and out of that area.
Thank you. Yes, Councilwoman Martinez?
I think we got the majority of the projects that people are passionate about in District 11 in here, but I, we're definitely going to hear about Hemp Hill Street, redoing Hemp Hill Street. And I do want to point out that in the funding for transportation parks and rec, [inaudible] do a lot of our transportation improvements, so, you know, it's, it's just, and I don't think, without having that list of, of So, you know, it's just, and I don't think, without having that list of the projects in District 11 for the bond, I feel like some of those are citywide projects, like Gateway and the animal shelter. So I'd like to see if those can be removed and get a better idea of what that district-wide funding would be.
And along those lines, I think some of us talked about this last, after last presentation, there are a few projects proposed in the bond that may be assigned to a specific council district that are catalytic for the entire city. And I think it would be helpful to break those out separately, so it feels citywide, whether it's a park or, to your point, a major corridor.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up, and I completely agree. Not that I don't want to put up big numbers for District 9. When you look at the parks, the two main park projects were the Water Gardens and Trinity Park, and while those reside in District 9, those are of citywide significance. And so it feels like we're going down the road of my district versus your district, and if we're going to do that, I don't think that's a productive discussion for us to have, but it's very clear that.
I think it's productive because voters have to vote. That's the main thing I worry about. I don't want us to tank the bond before we even get it out there.
Sure. But I do think if we do that, we need to have a real understanding of the data and what we're comparing. And so if I'm going to advocate for more bond dollars for District 9, I think you have to take in consideration things that are in District 9. It's City Hall, it's the Convention Center, it's the Water Gardens, Trinity Park, things that are city significant.
And I'll jump in. And I think to that same concern that both you guys are raising, I think it might be important for us to revisit how our bond performed the last time. I think we only had one or two things that didn't pass, but majority, most of.
Well, all our propositions passed last election.
Well, the raise or something else didn't pass.
Well, that's different, that's a different election.
Right, right, right. So I have a question about the supplemental project, the 125 million. That is currently not in the bond, is that correct?
Right.
And so the discussion that we're having is, you also said this is something we can switch with something that's actually in the bond, is that what we're discussing?
Correct. So part of the process, and so we wanted to talk to you here about it, is because we go out to the public. And again, in the past, there's a recommended list. Our citizens would bring up a project, you know, and when I say citizens, it would be one or two people would bring up a project that is on nobody's radar.
Right.
And then we have to try to address that as we go forward, and we didn't feel it was meaningful because it really didn't have a good shot of actually getting support with the city council, and you spent a lot of time on that. So instead, what we've done is come up with the next highest ranking projects and put those on the list so that folks know that a broader perspective was taken into account, and these are the current projects that are recommended. And if they'd like to advocate for another, a different project, then the question is, if there's no dollars available, what would you suggest coming out of the bond, or how would you end up making room in the bond to fit this project in there? And so that's what we're discussing.
What was our bond capacity last time?
560.
Okay, so we making a significant jump going up to 800?
A significant jump to 800 million is our current estimate for that. But that's based on some assumptions that, and I talked to a couple of council members earlier today, and I'm concerned that we're actually going to get to 800 million based on where the appraisal district's going and what some of the bills down in Austin.
So a couple of thoughts, and I was going to kind of wait to the end, but I'll go ahead and give those thoughts now. I appreciate you guys adding the Reisinger and Hemp Hill in, because I think that is one of the projects that's going to be a citywide fix for the Crowley ISD, who has brought in tremendous dollars to the city of Fort Worth and are good partners. And then as well as the Berry Quarter, that development Renaissance was built under Mount Creek, Maryamont Creek, and that just quarter, that development on Berry Street has just not been significant, has not been improved for the District 8 residents. So I appreciate those being added, and it would be detrimental to District 8 if those are removed out of the bond. I know my predecessor was trying to get it fixed as well as I the last four years. And also to talk to, and I know this council has had some hesitance about the housing bond, I want to bring it up at this time, and I'll talk about it further. I appreciate the 10 million, and I would love to see the 10 million get in there, because we have had several projects, I think my district, I don't have the numbers, have had most of the affordable housing implementation in the city of Fort Worth. And a couple of projects were two or $3 million short from happening, and we was able to partner with the city of Fort Worth in $1.5 million, and then $1.5 million from Tarrant County. And so I think it's important that we get some piece of the housing bond incorporated into this bond. I know that it may be a backlash, but I think the citizens of Fort Worth have to vote on it. When you look at Austin, and I have this pulled up here, Austin did a $300 million bond in 2022, and then Dallas did an $82 million in 2024 as it relates to housing. And if we're the fastest growing city and the 11th largest city in the United States of America, it is going to be important that we support affordable housing. And again, for our views and our listeners, that affordable housing is not houses of poverty, it is people who need just an additional help in order to provide for their families.
I want to ask a clarifying question. I'm jumping ahead to slide 23. So the list here, is that from the public, or is that from council?
What we heard so far. Yeah, what we heard so far, it says submissions.
Why don't you move to the next portion of the presentation?
Asking, because, I mean, I think some of these projects, like Bowen Roberts for me, should have been on the other slide. I don't know how these were.
This is the input that's coming in from the public.
Yes.
You have like one submission and two submissions?
Well, right, in the last like two weeks since we started gathering feedback since the last presentation. So this is, yeah, let me tell you about this. So this is the same public engagement slide you've seen. This is an example of what, you know, like a weekly sort of comment tracking report that we are, that we've started. So yeah, we haven't received very many yet because we haven't really publicized a.
To be clear, it says one.
Yeah, one.
One.
One email.
One email.
One email, right.
Don't put too much shock into it yet.
Yeah, it's a brand new email.
Counsel.
Yeah. Before we move on, let's make a comment. Thanks for, as we, staff, we talked about 2871 getting moved up into this. The growth that's happening there is incredible. It's not only more rooftops and more commercial, and it's important to the Ville Ranch development, Ventana Skyline Ranch. And I know that got moved up because it had the most leveraged other funds besides city funds.
That's right.
So I appreciate y'all responding to that, so we didn't lose, I think, $60 million in leveraged funds there. When you, since you asked the question, Mayor, what else might be hanging out there? And I think we got to, at least in design phase, think about Old Weatherford Road, as it glows in from 7 out to 3 and connects at, is that 1187, 337, whatever it is right there. But at least looking at that, because I've talked to all of those ranches they're selling and they're developing as well. And then just to put it on the record, too, I'm glad you brought up the, maybe looking at some of these and rebalancing, and I like the idea, too, Liz has brought up about making sure what our citywide projects aren't really counted towards anybody's specific district, because there are citywide projects. But what I said when you sat here on the table for the 2022 bond, I won't be, if I am sitting here in 2026 to advocate for the West so we aren't playing catch-up like we are in the North, so I think we just have to keep looking at those projects. At least get them in design phase so they're ready for future bonds or leveraged funds as we can get them from COG.
I have a question for staff. What, if a project is $10 million, let's say a transportation project is $10 million, typically speaking, how much of that is in design? Is it 10%, 5%, 30%? Can someone give me just a rough idea? There's a reason for my question, I promise.
Yeah, and I'll look to my group. So again, it just depends on the work type, right? There's a big difference between arterials or intersections or neighborhood streets, but I want to say we roughly budget around 20% for design.
Okay.
But then you also have other soft costs like inspection fees, construction management as well.
Yeah.
But these project costs are all encompassing.
The reason I ask, and it's, I don't think it's timely for this bond, but I would like staff to start thinking about it as we're constantly trying to evolve. Bond projects should, I think, should be shovel-ready, and so we really need to start looking at, why are we designed? We're limited in what we can spend with bond dollars, and it has to be capital. That 20% that we do in design for any project could be shifted out of the bond, and that would allow us more capacity. Now, we're shifting that work into our general budget, but it frees us up to do more capital, and I think it makes us smarter as a community when it comes time for how we program these bonds.
I think there's several projects, and Lauren can identify them, that were designed in the last bond program.
So our top three ranked projects were designed only in the 2022 bond. And in Tier 1 list, you know, the projects that made it into the arterials for the suggested 2026 bond, those are primarily defined by their project readiness, so we already have some design on them or funding leveraging opportunities.
Yeah, no, I get that we've done it before. What I'm saying is I think it's worth looking at our process and how we're funding design, because if we're limited to what, you know, we can't spend bond money on maintenance. And so we need every, and if you look at, we have 800 million, we have $125 million worth of optional projects there that we know we're going to have to arm wrestle to get to. And so every penny of that bond dollar, I want to, to the extent possible, see go to actual shovels in the ground building as opposed to the design and the pre-work that we could legally do here in the city and capitalize on the bond dollars.
I'd like to piggyback on Councilwoman Beck's position. When I was elected to D-10, one of the first things we did was Lauren and I drove every single bond-funded project up in the North. And what was really shocking to me and what was really concerning was there were bond projects that were in the 2014, 2018, and 2022 bond package. In some cases, we're a decade in and we haven't secured right of way. And for those projects, we've had to supplement what was originally allocated, you know, 10 years ago to actually bring what we promised voters in the bond package to fruition. So as Elizabeth was saying, I really think it is important that we have the ability to execute these within a timely manner so that the dollars that are proposed are actually able to cover the costs, or the proposed funding reflect projected future cost instead of current dollars.
If I could ask a question. Councilwoman Beck mentioned wanting to see more dollars go toward transportation projects like in previous bonds. I'd like to hear the rest of the city council's take on that. Would it be worth staff's time to reprioritize and reduce the amount of non-transportation-related projects currently on the list to increase that funding to 65%, which is closer to what's been traditionally in our bond program? The big difference on this is the animal control care facility, right, that was not part of the last bond program. So that's 7% of the bond in order to get there.
911.
And I'm not suggesting that that project go away necessarily, but if we want to increase more dollars to transportation, to get more transportation fund, funding in the bond, because that's the number one citizen ask, we could go through and prioritize and move some of the non-other projects into the supplemental list and move up more arterial transportation-related projects into the funded list, recommended list.
Because to your point, Jay, the propositions as proposed today, D and E, which is public safety improvements and animal care and shelter facility, are 8% and 7.5% respectively. So if you eliminated one of those propositions and put it all towards streets, you would solve for what Councilmember Beck articulated, but that would be a choice that this council has to make to not choose to build out your 911 facility or your inner shelter. Alternative to that is the money has to come out of parks and open space improvements or public library improvements.
Correct.
And public library is 1.8% right now, so it's reasonable.
Also, and this is in the school and in the total scheme of things, but I'm looking at the schools' neighborhood safety that you've got listed in our TPW, and several of those are on Fort Worth ISD's proposed closing list. And so I just asked staff to go back and look at those because there could be, those could be moot at this point.
Okay, that's good, Neil. Lauren, we'll take a look at that.
Any other reaction from council regarding?
And I know it's a hard question to ask, right, because it's.
Well, no, I'll jump in. I will, I think streets and mobility infrastructure is more important than a lot of other things, because we have several streets, I think even McPherson still needs Old Grove, and so Clark, I almost said that. So I was.
I'll echo, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the vast majority of the asks for the bond package were from TPW and its road packages that we all need. I think they were, what, 1.5 out of the 2.4 billion?
That's correct. There were about 61.5% of the ask was TPW, and so I think ultimately. I wasn't part of creating the whole overall list, but it kind of shuffled out to the ask level, not necessarily to the previous bond portions levels of percentages. But traditionally, when I was here in the past, the transportation piece has been around 65%, 66% of the.
The other comment I'll make is, my understanding is they didn't ask for everything they wanted. And the point I'm getting at is, you know, the needs that are identified for the city for transportation could 100% consume this bond and two more of the same size.
Yes.
It's by far and away our most outstanding need across the city, not just in my district, but in every district.
Any other comments around that? Councilman Williams?
Yeah, I would agree that, you know, transportation and mobility is probably the, it is the top priority, at least from a District 6 perspective, but also citywide. I think it would behoove us to maintain the level of commitment that we made in prior bonds, especially considering at some point, we do want to catch up as a city. And I think over the past several years, we've done a really good job leveraging private investment. I know Councilmember Crane and Councilmember Blaylock mentioned that earlier. And so, you know, we've done a lot of great work to get matching funds for these dollars, but I think it, I absolutely think we should. I also would say there are some areas on this list that, I mean, obviously, I'm not staff and I'm not the expert, but if there are ways to trim back some of these projects or, you know, move some, defer some projects to a later bond to be able to accomplish some of the things that I know several council members need from an arterial and mobility standpoint, I would say we absolutely should do that.
So counsel, if you look on the first page of the enumerated list that they just passed out, starting at the top with 911 Center, down to about middle of the page, last piece is public art, those are the projects you would cut? Just letting you know. So you start nicking through them and then give those to Jay what you'd want to cut. Kind of curious what you're going to give him. I'm just being honest, you know, because there's some pretty significant, important projects there. So, Councilwoman Beck?
I think it's time to have a serious discussion.
Okay, let's do it.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's fair.
Just know that what's in here, I've heard very vocal responses from a lot of you about some of these projects. So it would be interesting.
And I'm happy to go back with staff and come up with an alternate list and come back in two weeks at your next work session and present an alternate list and what that would look like from the staff's perspective if we made it to 65%. That way you could get an idea of what that may look like, and so you can do a comparison if that helps in the overall process.
The hard decisions, well, the harder decisions are going to be the community-facing facilities that we've heard a lot about, that people want. The less contentious, but still really important projects, for example, in the Parks Department, are things listed as other facilities related to our service centers, which we know those are vitally important to the operations of the Parks Department, but when you add them up, it's north of $20 million in facilities that our public never interacts with. Those are just questions we have to answer because at the end of the day, these are voter-approved propositions, and it's more difficult to demonstrate value to voters for a facility they will never see versus a new community center or a new pool. So I think if we're going to take. So I think if we're going to take these back to your offices, it's an important discussion to have. I do think the minimum, from my perspective, and we're almost there now, but is a 60% should be the bottom. We're not quite there, so it's a little of a bump. To Jay's point earlier, our historic funding has been 65%. So just think about that as you go through the list. Councilwoman Blaylock?
Thank you, Mayor. One other comment I would like to make about the list is, I'm aware there are about 25 intersections that have met signal warrants, and we should be signalizing around the city. Some of them, four of them, are in my district, but they're citywide, and they're currently not a part of the bond package. So I would just like to understand how we will, if we don't do it through the bond, how we will satisfy this need that's been demanded by the community.
Thank you. And then for a future agenda item, and you could, you don't have to even present it or you can, because I think housing has been a discussion publicly today, is I want to see, similar to what you did for how we fund transportation and parks and recreation out of other funding means, what are all the other resources we utilize toward housing in the city? I know that we haven't done a full housing bond, but I do think that's important to the discussion if we can have that too. Thank you.
Yes, we can do that. Appreciate that.
Anyone else? Councilwoman Crane?
Jay, I don't see it in here, maybe you're going to get to it in the end, but discussion we've had about 800 is what we're targeting, but it may be lower than that. So we're maybe talking in realm right now, and we're two months away after legislative session with that. So give us a little bit of that, too.
We can bring that back in two weeks. And really, it comes down to our revenue collection on the property tax side, right? So we currently are estimating a 3.5% increase for next year and going forward. Traditionally, we used four, sometimes 5% based on the appraisal district's new methodology that they're moving forward with. We rerun those numbers, got a little bit more conservative, we're at 3.5%. What's really concerning is what's going down and going on down in Austin with some of those bills that are there where they're either increasing exemptions for, like an example, business personal property, increasing that by 100 times. Currently, the city, I believe, is impacted with the current exemption of about $1 million a year. It'll be upwards of 15 million, I believe, is the number if that bill passes. There's a bill that's in between that, so it could be as much as 3 million to 5 million of lost revenues that we'd never see. So that's a, one of the, just an example of one of those that are out there. Additionally, we're talking about having this bond election next May. There are several bills that push the elections, all elections, to November. So that could change the overall timeline of this process where instead of council having until December to finalize a list, we may have till next August to finalize a list. So those things are all up in the air. We won't really know those answers to those questions until probably June 1st, right, when the session ends. But there's, those are just a few examples. There's a lot, there's, I believe, 1,200 bills that are actually impacting the city in one way or another, not all related to budget or revenues and the bond program, but there are that many bills down there that we're keeping track of.
And I, you know, along those lines, the other really detrimental movement is towards a 2/3 voter approval for all bond elections, which would mean 60% of our propositions in the past would have passed, the rest would have failed. So we've done our part to vocalize our concern about that, but just another really important item.
And I think the question comes up of how we can potentially fund, you know, some of this design early so that we can use bond programs for construction. In the past, and we did it at times when I was here, the council would issue some COs for those kind of things. There are several bills that would take the ability for us to issue COs, period. Certificate of Obligation, that does eat up some of your capacity, but you could do it at smaller intergr, inter, intermedial kind of processes to get the design done for important projects. And there's a potential for that option being gone as well. With all that, I mean, there's a lot of things up in the air. And so, but we will come back with a, with a couple of different scenarios. We'll do the 60% and we'll do a 65% all toward transportation so you all can get a feel for that. And we can have that discussion.
What is our next scheduled, Christiane, on bond discussion?
We don't have another workshop or council presentation scheduled right now, but we can.
Okay.
We'll bring one on the 15th as part of the work session.
April 15th.
April 15th. And then we'll, the idea, if you go to the next steps, we have, starting in May, the public engagement process is our, is our process. And started having community meetings, we'll be talking to all the council members about having meetings in your districts as we go through the process through the summer and early fall.
Yes, and it'll be great because there'll be, you know, comp, comp plan, engagement opportunities, opportunities to streamline engagement. Y'all hear me talk about that all the time. So we'll do budget and bond and comp plan, and it'll be exciting over the summer, lots of robust conversations, hopefully. And if I can, we talked a little bit about comment tracker, this is super early, but we'll be tracking comments and feedback as it comes along. And then you've heard me say too, that we want to focus on digital engagement. So just to end on a little bit of a fun note, we're using the Balancing Act tool, or proposing to use this Balancing Act tool, when, just digitally and also, you know, out facilitating a live conversation. So it's cool because the public can have the same conversation that you're having now where they take, you know, maybe an $800 million bond capacity, and then we have the supplemental projects loaded there too. If you look at the screen, you can sort of see a live video of what that looks like. So they can sort of check and put things in, put things out, and try to balance the 800 million. So it's kind of an interesting, you know, how far does the dollar stretch, digital activity. And then we're also proposing to use this cool story maps tool so they can do that balancing exercise within it. This is also a digital tool that they can look at scopes. Staff went around and took pictures of all the different areas of projects, which I didn't know till yesterday when I saw this, saw this presentation. I said, you guys went and took all these pictures? So if you'll see, and they can hit continue, you can see the map of all the locations. If one's interesting to you, you can click in, and it'll show you like the project location and the scope, how the estimate was derived, all that kind of stuff. So it's a lot of information online that we haven't necessarily had before outside of maybe a booklet. So this is just sort of our continued effort to being sort of more open data and giving people a lot of ways to engage, not in a public meeting, but also digitally. So just a quick sneak peek there for fun.
I think that's a really good, implementation is key, and I would love to see our neighborhoods get trained on these, especially our neighborhood presidents. They can help. I know in the past we've done this with the budget, but it's helpful if our neighborhood presidents can, and our community engagement team have the resources to be able to help engage our neighbors on how to give feedback so that we give feedback to make informed decisions. And then same with like how we advertise it. I don't know if we have dollars set aside to advertise these so that it gets into more hands, but this is a powerful tool, and I would love to see the sample size, you know, way up there and ensure that our neighbors are participating in it.
Yeah, me too. Thank you.
We want to take advantage of all of you all and your newsletters and direct connection to the community, so we'll be putting that out to your staff so you can add those in.
Yes, so Bethany and I will start working together on all of that. Very exciting. So next steps, we've talked enough about, I think. And so with that, there's the new bond program email address. You can obviously email staff and people can, but we're trying to route everything that we get to this email so we can actually have a more robust comment tracker. And that's it.
Thank you, Christiane. Any other questions from council?
Just one, Mayor.
Yes.
A lot of great information, thank you. Certainly, you know, what I mentioned last time still remains true for District Four. Obviously, to the mayor's point, a lot of angst, I guess you could say, in District Four and District 10, just from social media side and what they're seeing. I mean, whenever you have someone as pragmatic as Rusty Fuller also bringing out the fact that this is, I mean, it's, to your point, Councilwoman Beck, I agree, I don't want this to become a district versus district. Whenever one particular district, it's less than half of 1% or right at half of 1%, I guarantee you'd be doing the same thing. I do believe that high tide lifts all boats, so I do want to see improvements citywide. However, when one boat is completely getting overtaken in District Four and sinking, I think that's where we had the issue. To Councilman Nettles' point, I agree. I think housing certainly important. I think one of the ribbon cutting ceremonies we had for a mixed income use facility, which is amazing, they're doing great work and they'll continue to do great work. I told them there, that's one hill I am willing to die on is whenever it comes to housing. That said, whenever you look at 10 million for supplemental for housing, and you talk about a district that's going to get just half of that for all the needs, again, I guarantee you, voters in District Four, this would be no across the board. So I'd hate for it to see all this hard work go into it, only for it to not pass because it just seems completely unbalanced. Public art, I do agree, that's something that I've talked about before. I do think it's time to have that serious conversation and take that back to the voters. I mean, District Four, we're about to get a half a million dollar piece of art in a roundabout, and that's great as people are looking at it. They'll be able to fix their flat tire from the potholes on the side of the road and stare at the beautiful art. So that makes zero sense. Whenever we have, we talk public safety and how important that is, and yet we have some TACMed vehicles that may not have all the equipment they need for advanced life-saving because they don't have the funds for a $50,000 piece of equipment, but yet we have this beautiful piece of art in a roundabout that's built by someone who doesn't even live in Texas or Fort Worth for that matter. I don't think that's right. So I'm talking to more and more voters who are upset and was like, well, hey, that was you guys, that was us, we all voted on that. I think it's time that we had that conversation again, especially as dollars are harder to get. And I've said it before, until we're a country like Dubai where you can make islands out of, or make islands look like palm trees, until we're that rich with cash, then I think that's a serious conversation we're going to have to have with how we're spending money. And I know it's going to piss a lot of people off. I was told early on, like, don't go after the arts people, but quite frankly, it's not going after the arts people, it's just being good stewards of those dollars. So I'd definitely like for us to have that conversation and, again, put it back out to the voters, and if they agree it's still that important, then that's fine. I'd say we at least give them that opportunity to speak up again. And I think it would be prudent, too, before we really dive into some of the larger community meetings, I'd like for staff, if at all possible, to be available for key stakeholder meetings like with Rusty Fuller and other HOA presidents, Neighborhood Association presidents, to all come together in the room. That way, when we do go to those large meetings, which again, the way it stands right now, it will be, will not be a pleasant one. So I just want to make sure that everyone's armed with as much information as possible before we go into that. So I think that pre-meeting with the leadership and stakeholders would be really great.
We're certainly, we're certainly open.
Perfect, thank you. And that's all I have, thank you.
Councilor Lars Dorff, any other questions or discussion from council? If not, we're going to adjourn and move into executive session. Thank you.
Thank you.
City council will now convene into executive session on the following matters. The city council will conduct a closed meeting in order to seek the advice of its attorneys as authorized by Section 551.071 of Texas Government Code. Deliberate concerning real property matters as authorized by Section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code. Deliberate concerning economic development negotiations as authorized by Section 551.087 of Texas Government Code. And deliberate concerning security as authorized by Section 551.076 and Section 551.089 of the Texas Government Code.